PRV intro music today.
We can do that.
Why not?
In the head east train.
Yes, please.
A lot of people.
My favorites.
All right, Jay, does that mean we're up and rolling? All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Now, welcome to the City of Bettendorf Committee of the whole meeting. Today is Monday, June 3rd, 2024. It's 5 o'clock PM. Thank you all for joining us. We'll start tonight. Do you want to go first since you're sitting there? Are you going to stay there, Chief?
I was planning on going up there too, but he's more than welcome to go first. It doesn't matter.
Well.
Or I can go up there.
Let's have you, we'll just follow the agenda. We'll start with our presentation on speed enforcement, and then we'll move into our consent item F on the site development plan for 2570 Middle Road. All right, Chief Keith Kimball, thank you very much for joining us. You have the floor.
All right, thanks Mayor and the City Council. So in front of you, you should find two handouts, one from me on the update of City Council strategic goals regarding speeding stop signs, and also a handout from Angie Sharp. I'm going to go ahead and speak first, and then if there's anything that Angie wants to add in there, if you have any, any questions. So I'm here, here to kind of give you an update. So I'm pleased, this is, as you know, now, for the last two months, we have made a concerted effort at the Police Department specifically regarding speed enforcement. So in front of you, I've outlined some information. So there's some statistics there from April 1st through the 30th, where we had 469 traffic stops, 466 citations or written warnings were issued out of those traffic stops, and 124 of them were specifically for speed. The following month, the most recent month, May, we're just a few days short of stats there because what I had to run the stats. So, but this is almost a month, just a few days short. If you look there in May, we had 480 traffic stops, 432 resulted in citations or written warnings, and 155 of those were for speed violations. So that's just in the last two months when we've kind of ramped up this awareness and, and public engagement. Now, one thing to understand is on some of these numbers, if we have traffic stops that end up resulting in any type of an arrest for a serious offense, then those, the higher level offenses are going to take over. So when we run our stats, it's going to get reclassified. So in actuality, we've, we've probably got the, the traffic stop numbers are probably actually higher than that. But to run the stats real easy, that's, that's what that designates. But it gives you, it gives you a good, a good idea what's going on. And also, the people that get arrested and go to jail may also have speeding, they may have speeding charges attached to that offense. A lot of times, maybe with an OWI, like an operating while intoxicated, for example, there would be, could be additional charges tacked on to that. Now, if you, one of the things I did want to bring up, Sergeant Patrick Mease brought this up, and I thought it was a good observation. So we just kind of looked at the same timeframe last year. So if you just look over these, these last two months in 2023, we had the same number, if not maybe a little bit more, but we had about the same number of traffic stops total compared to this year. So our actual numbers in traffic stops probably have not changed much, but where the focus is, we have, when it was, when it's specific to speed, we had just a little over half the number of speeding citations or warnings last year compared to this year. So what that has shown is our officers have always been proactive out there doing enforcement, making traffic stops, but now it's, it's refo, it's what is, we've redirected and refocused where it's geared more towards some of being, being speeding. I don't know if that makes sense to you, but I just wanted to point that out to you. And for instance, I'll just use an example off top. We had the May, the May statistics there where it shows 155 for speed violations. Last year, we had 85 for speed violations. So it was 70, 70 less last year than it was this year. So that just gives you an idea. Also, officers have continued now to, to conduct directed traffic enforcement. So there's been an effort between our patrol captain, our shift supervisors, and our officers, mainly between the overlap where we have a three-hour overlap, where we've really taken extra officers if they aren't tied up and we're above minimum manpower, to specifically focus on Middle Road between I-74 all the way out to 53rd, Spruce Hills Drive between I-74 and Middle Road, and 53rd Avenue between 8th Street, 18th Street, Middle Road. So really from our west, kind of to our west boundaries, over into the, the north, northeast part of our, our town and those. And that's just directed. Now, I also have here, if you look on page two, our traffic, specific to our traffic bureau, we've been, now with the nicer weather, we've been utilizing our speed trailer. So that gets moved around a lot. We, we like to keep it there at least for a week, if not two. So these are some areas that we, a lot of them are generated by citizen complaints, where we try and move it around, so it gets some exposure. And again, that's where it gives them, the drivers a digital readout of their, their current speeds and brings awareness to the, the speed limit in those, in those areas. So those are some of the locations there. And then also, specific to just dedicated traffic enforcement areas where we, the more what I call traditional, where we're actually sitting stationary, being visible, maybe on a side street or whatever. Those, these are various places in town where both our traffic division and in the, in the morning and afternoons, when school was in session, or some of our officers focused in the, in these areas, highlighting a lot of our areas where we, we see the most complaints or our own, our own observations as officers. So that just kind of gives you a list of that. So I don't know if you've got any specific questions about anything that's included in, in this handout for you. But like I said, we're, we're continuing, continuing on, going to be continuing this, and we'll continue to work back to you on a monthly basis, whether it's through a more formal setting like this, or through, through emails. I'll, I'll keep you updated. Obviously, that's the enforcement component of this. You know, I would, I just, Angie's been a great help to, to me and the Police Department as far as that public engagement aspect, and giving advice and recommendations and, and suggestions how we proceed forward. And so, as you know, the first, the first month, there wasn't that, but we wanted to get, we wanted to get some visibility out there. And then really about a month ago is when we really hit, hit that hard. So I don't know if, Angie, if you've got anything you want to comment on that?
Yeah, sure. Thanks, Chief. So as Chief mentioned, there is a packet at each of your spots that details our engagement initiative for this goal. And Lisa, I just emailed you my handout as well as Chief's, in case you want to take a look at that. At the top of the first page, you'll see we launched our communications campaign one month ago, May 3rd, which was about one month, as Chief mentioned, into the enforcement side of things. That way, we have the before, those April numbers Chief presented, and even the ones before that. We've got the during, the May numbers, and months to come. And one day, we'll have the after. All things we can use to measure the success of this initiative. Our communications campaign included a press release to our media partners, an email to all city employees, including City Council, an article on our website under our city news page, a mayor's message video that was posted on the city's Facebook page, shared to the police Facebook page, as well as posted on our YouTube channel, Nextdoor page, and X page. We also sent that mayor's message out to our Alert Iowa users. We created a project on Zen City for this City Council goal, and hopefully you've seen the emails that I've been sending you twice a week with summaries on the online conversation that we're keeping a very close social listening ear on. Through Zen City, we are also able to create an engagement called the Speed Spots Map. I've been sending those results to Chief Kimball, Traffic Sergeant Measick, and Captain Streepy once a week. In the center of the first page, you'll see some data about the mayor's message. I can tell you with confidence that it's one of our best mayor's messages to date, with more than 2,000 impressions on the city's Facebook page. And impressions are the total number of times our content is displayed on a person's screen, whether it's clicked on or not. And also nearly 2,000 reach, which is the total number of people who see our content. On the Facebook page, there were a number of reactions, as you can see, likes, comments, shares, as well as 109 clicks to the Speed Spots map. On our YouTube, the mayor's message has been viewed 573 times. On Nextdoor, it's had nearly 1,000 impressions and several reactions, and honestly, probably some of the most comments we've ever seen on a Nextdoor post from the city. We've also had some help from our media partners to get the word out, stories on our local television stations and in the newspaper. So like I mentioned today, marks one month since our engagement initiative started. I sent you all an email this morning, and attached to your packet is the Zen City summary from the last month, which shows a 147% increase in conversation about speed enforcement compared to the previous month before our engagement initiative started. The summary also points out that most of the sentiment, or the attitude towards the post, just a fancy word for that, most of the sentiment on social media is neutral. Though Zen City also points out that 10% is positive. When it comes to the Speed Spots map itself, we've had 156 people interact with the engagement for a total of 329 pins and counting. I sent you a link with the latest results in an email this morning as well, or if you'd like to see it on your computer tonight, I can bring it up for you after the meeting. As Chief mentioned, we're not done with this initiative. The first thing we did after launching our communications campaign was set up a follow-up meeting. So Chief Kimball, Sergeant Measick, and I are getting together next week to discuss some more communications tactics. Many I'm keeping very close to the vest because I don't want to reveal them just yet. But we plan to meet in July and August as well, especially as summer ends and school begins with our school zones. And Jeff's been keeping up to date on all these discussions as well. So if there's anything to add, I turn the floor over to him.
Well, yeah, just really quick to kind of put a bow on this. I would just emphasize two points I think are very important here. One, we know that the speeding enforcement policy and city actions was a goal of council. And with that, over the last 60 days, we went from essentially no communications or, you know, push out there to now we have monthly meetings where Chief and his staff meet with Angie and her team, and they talk about direction and strategies if there needs to be anything changed. But the goal is now going to be reviewed regularly on a monthly basis. And then also, I think Chief and Sergeant Measick's video they did with Mayor Bob also emphasized the point about this is not so much to get out there and write tickets. The point is to get people safe and to get people thinking in that mindset that Bettendorf is a community where we take that very seriously. And that's the goal that that video really posted out there. So I think the, the stationary officers and the enforcement that's taking place, coupled with the communications right now, I think it's really starting to take, take an effect on the community, and I think people are seeing it. We talked about this today, and you know, the hundreds of people that have been pulled over, and the number of people that have been hit on social media or through our communications avenues, I think it's really starting to have a positive impact. And with these monthly meetings that they're going to continue to have, hopefully the, the enforcement continues in the right direction.
We have questions. Yes, Jerry.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I've got a couple of questions. One is, are we getting any feedback from the people who are pulled over? The people that are pulled over, do they acknowledge that they've heard the, heard that we were having a campaign to slow them down? Or are they just ignorant?
Yeah. So I can't really speak to that. I don't know. I will, I will tell you that I, to, to the public engagement standpoint, you know, we think of all the, the stuff that Angie gets involved with. But what we do forget, and you're kind of hitting on something, so I'm going to take it, is we forget about our, our old traditional ways people communicate, right? So it's by word of mouth and in person. So I can tell you that I, I have heard citizens, either I know or, or don't know personally, that the buzz is out there where they know somebody that's pulled over. So I was, you know, if you just look at the, if you just look at the statistics, you know, I would say there's probably over the last two months, there's been over, I'm going to, I'm going to round up because I know of arrests, but there's probably been over 1,000 stops. But there's probably been close to 300 over the last two months specific for speed. Those would probably be ones where those drivers are maybe not people that, this might be the only contact they have with police. I, I listen to our officers. I think they make their decisions based on all the information at hand, make good decisions. I know they appreciate getting a written warning over a citation. I've heard those comments out there in public in the conversations that are being had by our officers. So I think our officers are reasonable about, about their contacts. But it, it spreads, right? Because as, as you see, as a citizen drives by, you think of during that traffic stop, think of all the vehicle traffic that drives by that particular traffic stop. So they're all seeing that. So that's a deterrence, or at least a reminder, right? There's that one-on-one conversation that the officer's having with that citizen that's in that driver's seat. And then after that stop, that driver is having conversations, I'm sure, with their friends and family. And then they're having conversations. So I, I have the hope that just in the short two months, and as this continues, the more contact we have with people, you know, this is 300 people that hopefully won't speed again, and maybe the ones that could be our more frequent flyers, who knows? So right off the bat, you know, we're, so I think over time, we're starting to see it, but I have full confidence over time as we just continue this, it is going to continue to, to, to be better. And I personally, driving around in my personal unmarked car throughout the city at all times of day and night, I feel, I, again, maybe it's, maybe it's because it's my perception, but, but I really think that I'm starting, the mayor and I were talking about this before the meeting, where I'm, I believe I'm starting to see just the general flow of traffic on our busier roadways, maybe coming down a little bit, the, the speeds, because I, I'm, you know, I see 53rd, I see 18th, and it's not going to, you know, every once you're going to have, you're going to have your, your people that are, are going to be outside that and are going to be speeding. But I do think so. I'm, I'm hopeful, and I do think it's, it's starting to make a difference, and will continue to.
And then my, thank you. My second question is, do our, are our partners with the Iowa Patrol helping us out on I-74?
So that, so we have not, I've not specifically engaged them, but I will tell you, prior to even the conversations, I'm in contact with the supervisor, the commander of the state, the local state police post. He's fully aware of this. Our, because of some of the initiatives by the governor a while back, more related to gun violence and stuff, we have a more presence of, of the state police, I think, within our city and, and our city roadways. And they are where they are, we communicate with them. In fact, I just, we had an incident today happen. And so our state police partners are in partnership with us, always willing to cooperate, partner, and, and help us with, with any type of enforcement. So it's a, it's a good, it's good teamwork. So we are, we are in communication with them.
Thank you.
Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. Chief, are, are we also, under these numbers, are we looking at stop sign and red light violations along with the speed? Or have we just segmented that out?
Right now, it's been directed more towards speed. I will be honest, it, it's, it's hard because that's a specific point in time and location. And, and many times, many times, we're not, we're not there, you know, we're there. And, and so it is directed, been more towards speeding.
One other question. A lot of cities that I'm familiar with have rules for the Police Department. You would establish that rule, that you'll give them a warning, but if it goes into the computer, and if they get pulled over again, the officer will see that they've had a warning for speed, and they will give them a ticket that time. Is that something that we're doing or would want to do?
No, I, I don't have any, I, I don't have any set rules. I'll be honest, we have to be really careful because the Supreme Court and the courts have ruled on anything implying traffic quote, you know, citation quotas, giving orders, specifics. I trust our, our officers and their judgment, you know, they're, they're going to, they're going to base things based on, they, they use their discretion, but I think they have, they have good judgment in that. And some of the things that may come in is obviously the speed itself, you know, how far it's over. One of the things they may do is they may look at a prior, a prior record, it may go into their decision-making, whether they've been, it's in the state computer where they would got a citation. Now, warnings are not in the state on your driver's license. That is just more of a local record, but the officers have the ability to check somebody's local record just to see if they have had any past incidents where maybe they've been given, given warnings. So it's really a case-by-case basis, and I, I leave that up to, I leave that up to the officers and their judgment. Because in the end, they're the ones that are going to have to go to court. They're the ones on the line that have to testify and, and before the judge in the, in the courts. So what they feel comfortable with.
Thank you.
Other question.
Greg?
Greg Adamson. Got my attention first, then we'll go to Greg Jager.
Thank you, Your Honor. I really want to thank everybody, council, mayor, staff, especially Chief and Police Department. I kind of, this was kind of one of my hot buttons. And I thought it was important to have the enforcement, but also the communications through our media. And this is far and above better than I ever imagined, because I really didn't understand the capabilities that we had. So I want to thank Angie and the Chief and everybody for, because I, I've heard nothing but good from, from citizens, and they appreciate the fact that they're a little bit safer driving around town. So thank you to everybody.
Greg Jager.
Thank you, Your Honor. Chief, could you talk for just a moment about how you're integrating the information you're receiving from the citizens through the Speed Spots site into your enforcement decisions?
So the, the Traffic Bureau will, will review that. You know, there's, it starts to look, you know, when you, when you sit back and look at it, there's, there's a lot there. And, and the thing is, is we're going, we're going to hit the main thoroughfares and things first. If it gets more into residential, there may be other things we, we, we can do in those residentials. But it's really, we just kind of take a look at it and, and make judgment, you know, make judgment calls on where we feel the, the best resources will, will be. And if we've gotten, maybe spend, you know, hit that for a day or two, just, you know, maybe just for a few hours, just for obs, you know, observation, just to see if there's anything that we can confirm. Because unfortunately, what does happen, and I will just tell you from experience, where when people call, or when people email or reach out to the Police Department, one of the things that I will always do is like, what, what made them call me? Like, what, what caused them? What was the, the precipitating event or events that got them to the point where they felt the need to call? And generally, what we find out is it's a one-time incident where someone is out, you know, definitely speeding, there's no question on that, but it's not, it's not the norm. And, you know, and those are always the frustrating ones that, you know, we all, we all think of. It's like, you know, I see them too when I drive around off-duty. It's like, if there was only a police officer around to see this, right? I mean, that's, that's, that's the half the battle. But, so I, I think on, on those, we, we can do an initial assessment and just see, is there something, can we put the speed trailer, you know, it might not be something where we have as much enforcement of it. Is it something where we can rotate the speed trailer around and, and put that at that location, just to bring some awareness to it?
Certainly, if there are 300 different locations, you can't put TOPPS in 300 different locations. But if the, if the data is showing you a cluster
Right.
of area, that would be something that you would, I assume, would want to be looking at.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yep, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Lisa, you have questions?
Yeah, I want to echo a couple things. I appreciate, I'm going to echo some of Jeff's comments. You know, when we discussed this at strategic planning, the point was not tickets, it was safety. So I want to echo Jeff's point. I think this has been, been great with the communication and stuff. And as I've read some of the comments, I think it's been great that some citizens have been feeling comfortable, you know, bringing some stuff up. And, you know, as Keith mentioned, say, some of the school zones, you know, they're obviously feeling comfortable, you know, approaching him with some concerns. And I think that shows, you know, respect for the city, respect for the Police Department and Keith, and they're feeling comfortable approaching us because we're coming at it from an educational side versus, you know, let's write out tickets. So a big thanks to Keith and this crowd and Angie and stuff. So I think this has worked out well with, you know, what we intended.
Anything else for Keith or Angie? Scott?
Thank you, Your Honor. So regarding the Speed Spots thing, how are people, I, I look back at some of the notes and the comments, how are people learning of that? If they missed the mayor's message, and they, you know, it's buried from May 3rd on the city news thing, is there like an ongoing, maybe that's what Angie alluded to, that maybe there's some stuff that's coming that she doesn't want to, you know, give up tonight. But it seems like maybe that's getting lost in the general public. I don't know that it's on Main Street.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I think it's all about, you know, how much, how much to do at a time. And I, I'm sure probably the next opportunity we have when we meet and what our, whatever next game plan is, I'm sure that we will go over that again with the public and, and remind, you know, every time we have that chance, we're engaging the public, we'll, we'll remind, we'll remind them of that. And I believe it's on our city, on our city website. But to your point, I think just each time, you know, when, what we decide, I'm sure that'll always be in the background and always mentioned.
And I think we want to be supportive, not only of the goal, but of the department. And you guys out there every day fighting this fight. And I think when we had the issue as a, as a campaign, the, the lock it, lock your car, there was a logo and consistent branding, because you really wanted people like, look, this is a simple thing. If you don't lock your car, you're probably going to, eventually, you have somebody rifle through it. And I think that a similar thing maybe come in here, like click it or ticket, you got to wear a seatbelt, lock it, lock it up. That was a branded campaign. Do we have thoughts of that for a similar thing for this goal? Because if we don't have something out there on a regular basis that people can point to and go, okay, they're serious. This is, this is an ongoing thing. This becomes so much harder for the department to do all the work. But if we can change behavior and plant seeds, then people will maybe organically evolve. Just a thought. But I don't know, maybe that's the communication meeting. Is that where that?
Yeah, so the meeting we'll have, the meeting we'll have with Sergeant Measick. So just background on that. So we already, over the years, have done that. So I, I think I've, I've mentioned this, but one of the things that Sergeant Measick manages is our Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau grant money. And through that, through that program, there's certain requirements that we're required to do as a police department. Some of it is social media campaign and safety. And in fact, they, the state sends us the social media packets to use, to be used, posted on our Facebook on various traffic safety-related issues. Speed is one of them. But like you said, click it or ticket, you know, as far as seatbelt enforcement, you know, a lot of times around the holidays, we do, you know, the drunken driving awareness and things like that. So there, there are requirements that we have to engage the public just for that grant. So yeah, you, you will, you will see that. And I'm sure that something will come out of that meeting with Sergeant Measick and Angie and I after we meet.
Well, and some of, some of the residential streets, what I'm seeing, and I think many of you are, are those families that are putting out the little, you know, slow down, there's kids playing here. What I'm seeing in the second ward is occasionally, these 27-foot wide streets, the vehicles are parking across from each other, maybe even a little bit farther out in the street, so that they're trying to create some sort of, almost like a funnel, like you can't really go through there very fast, because, you know, if your depth perception's off a little. But people are taking that into their own hands. And maybe if that speed spot thing was a little more prevalent, then it would be, people wouldn't be doing such things. That's, now they're part of the problem, trying to solve the speed issue. So thank you for your efforts and your hard work on this.
Anything else on this one? Gentlemen, thank you very much. Thanks, Angie. Appreciate it. Let's move on to our consent agenda item, consent F. This is a resolution approving a site plan, site development plan, please excuse me, at 2570 Middle Road. And for that, we welcome our Community Development Director, Mr. Mark Hunt. Mark, you have the floor.
Just a little prologue. About May 4th, a very close person in my personal household was pulled over for speeding in Bettendorf, and was able to obtain a written warning, given a very clean driving record and very limited infraction that occurred. But just so you know, it's, it's fair for everybody. We're all participating.
What was the family member's impression of the?
Were they aware of the ad campaign? I'd like to take the fifth at this, at this time, Your Honor.
Granted.
Let's talk consent. 24 is 03, 2570 Middle Road. This is a site development plan. You've seen this site development plan before, but we do have a, a change for you. And the change was significant. And so we wanted to bring it back through planning and zoning into this body as well. The address, 2570 Middle Road. If you're keeping score at home, that's Lot 3 Ewing Bettendorf, First Edition. Remember the vintage co-op back here, of course, the, the bank building and Hungry Hobo and those other things that are in here on mine's eye, I'm sure. The applicant is Matt Mulligan from Switch, Switch Development LLC, or Switch Mulligan LLC. I think it may be a typo. I apologize for that, Mr. Mulligan. Request for a site development plan update. So we're changing the use here. So you, you're already seeing this building going up. You're driving by, you're seeing there's a building there. That's not changing. The building footprint isn't changing. We did expand the site a little bit. I'll get into that, to provide more parking, which I think is a good thing. And this, this concept called X Golf, which is a trademarked indoor golf venue. And this, this concept called ExGolf, which is a trademarked indoor golf venue, hitting bay style venue, is really classified as commercial recreation, controlled impact. And that's a different use than we first envisioned coming here, but a, but a pretty cool use, I will add myself. Now, and they needed some additional parking to make all this happen, which they've gone out and done. I'll get to those details in a second. ExGolf's concept does have a bar on the inside and a patio, really limited patio, I'm going to be honest with you, with alcohol service. Those are approved the Board of Adjustment, that's a separate body, as you know. But those uses have been approved and are allowed per special use permit at this location. We always like to just double-check our planning documents here. So our future land use says we have community commercial. Guess what? We've zoned it C2, community commercial. And lo and behold, commercial recreation controlled impact, that interior recreation is allowed. So we're aligned with our plan, we're aligned with our zoning. And that's very important and glad to report that. So we'll look at this, and you'll see the building footprint again. That's not changing. What's new, from what you saw before, is this double line of parking here on the east side. We do have a slightly bigger site. They were able to acquire roughly 26 feet adjacent to the property here to make that happen. And then a small patio feature added here, really just about kind of a four-table outdoor seating kind of setup. It bumps this area up to 77 parking spaces. They'll need about 55 of them to, to house the ExGolf, which is just slightly larger, or slightly more than half the building. And so that use has four bays and then the bar use, and then some seating and some retail sales area for t-shirts and hats and that type of thing. So you end up needing about 55 spaces. We kind of calculated that out based on all the different uses. And that leaves 22 spaces for whatever comes to the remainder of the building. That's still a work in progress. They're still looking for leases, but they have some concepts out there. We did add a note to this, to this case that we'd like to see those before they come in, just to double-check that parking. But this place is uniquely situated in that it's parking adjacent to a rather large parking lot. So the options for cross-easements are pretty, pretty spectacular. If you look at Northwest Bank, then it just happens that Mr. Mulligan is also the owner of Switch Homes, which has a lot just to the northwest, which could be an off-site parking situation. So, a lot of flexibility. We try not to overpark things. We're not trying to make mass pavement. We're trying to right-size park it, and I think we're doing a good job here. We do have 11 trees factors. Kind of fitting those in is, is unique in this, in this, in this landscape, because we do have so much easement and some drainage area here in the front. We're probably going to ask them to work with their neighbors to the north to maybe put some back there, if that can be agreed upon. If not, he'll have to fit them in on the available locations in the property. I threw this slide in here because I wanted to show you, and I will zoom in a little bit if I can. Wanted to show you where that 26-foot piece came from. So this is Lot 1 with vintage co-op on it. If you remember, that was a flag lot back in 2017 or 2018, whenever that was platted. And it was flag lot, but there was never any intention for that flag to provide access. In fact, there will never be access to Lot 1 off of Middle Road. It was done, for the research I've done and talked with other staff members that were here, just so they could have a kind of a Middle Road address. But really, the, the access is never going to be provided there. That's why that 26-foot piece was available for Lot 3, you see here. All the access comes in this direction, through the easement here. We have a positive stack recommendation on this case, where the conditions shown below. I put a checkmark by a couple of them that were done, so they don't actually appear in the staff report that you see, in the council letter that you see. We did ask them to work with the neighbors to the north to see if they could come to some agreement on maybe putting those trees on the north side. They're still working on that, but we've got some positive indications in that regard. We really appreciate that partnership. And then some evidence of the acquisition of Lot 1. They were still in the middle of getting closings and documents signed, but we've got that signed contract for the sale of, of that sliver of land. And then just asking if they come back and check with the city so we can really look at the parking requirements, how we might park other users that, other users that come in. And we're looking forward to having that conversation, because we think it's a pretty cool development. Planning and zoning commission also concurred with our recommendation on May 15th, 2024. I'd be happy to answer some questions you might have.
Questions? Greg?
Where's, how do people get to this building?
Yep. All the access is through the easement here. It's the same access easement that serves Hungry Hobo and Northwest Bank.
Okay, so there's not a new driveway?
There's not a new driveway.
Thank you.
I thought you were going to ask about the facility. And I will, if nobody else does, because in your neighborhood, we had a similar issue that you called on many a time.
Yes.
Anybody else have questions? We'll go Nick, and then we'll go to Jerry.
Thank you, your honor. Forgive me, this is probably where I have a little bit of ignorance to this topic, but what does this do from a change of future use? So let's, we talked about this golf situation here, ExGolf. But what else can go into or fits into this new designation? Is it, is it more limiting, less limiting? I guess I'm not familiar with that.
There is no new designation, so the zoning stays the same. They didn't change zoning. They changed the use that they petitioned for, has changed now. They were saying office, retail, commercial. ExGolf is technically controlled impact recreational, still allowed in C2. But then when you're changing the use, we want to see that site plan come forward and go through this body.
Got it. So then, in, with future business, as long as they meet the community commercial, that, that impact designation doesn't really affect use in the future?
Yeah, so, let me clarify again. So we're talking about a use called commercial, commercial recreational controlled impact. That's a different use than they originally proposed here. I think they proposed restaurant or retail. So that inside, indoor golf venue is different. That use is still allowed in C2. So they're just bringing it forward and letting us know, hey, we got a new user. This is what he is. He's a little bit different. That's a different enough change that we wanted to see a site plan come back through and show us this parking. As far as what could be brought there in the future, is the same as the last time you saw the site plan. Anything that's in C2 could show up there. That will fit inside of a building that's already built with this parking.
Okay. Mark, it'd be the parking that's the key, when you end up talking about the use?
Really, I mean, if you, if you're getting down to nuts and bolts, yeah. Now your users are going to be limited, because you got about 22 spots available. Now, we do allow for offsetting hours. So if the golf venue is open, you know, noon to 9:00, and you want to have a breakfast restaurant from 8:00 to noon, we allow, we allow those kind of parking overlays to occur.
Jerry, did you have something?
Yes, thank you, your honor. I'm disappointed to see that they have a sidewalk around the building, but no sidewalk to get to it. For, for example, behind it, on the north side, we've got the co-op community back there with, with what, a couple, 100, more than 100 apartments? And yet, to get from there to here, you have to walk in the, walk in the street. There's no sidewalk. I would hope that our future code review, that we consider, at least consider fixing that.
Yeah, I think the question would be, would we require some type of, on interior driveline, some type of sidewalk? We've not done that before, because those are not right-of-way. They're just access easements, usually as they are in this case. And that's, that's something we'd have to look at with the city attorney. But again, this is an access easement, not right-of-way. That's why there's no sidewalk going into the site.
Mark, we had a similar use in Bettendorf that ended up leaving Bettendorf. That use, I believe, if you recall, help me out, had a requirement that 50% or more of the sales had to come from golf. It kind of turned into a bar that really kind of deteriorated in the neighborhood. Is that the same kind of a requirement here? Or is it different because the zoning is different? Or maybe there's another reason it's different?
Okay, I wasn't here and I didn't work the previous case, but I'm familiar with it as just a resident of Bettendorf, so let me just say that. So I didn't have a particular staff analysis of that case. But what I think happened there is you had a business that came in to be hitting bay golf type of thing, but it also had other games and, and kind of bar fun stuff that really took off. This is not that business. This is very dedicated, very high-technology, driving towards, people towards that, that indoor golf experience. And that's what it is. These four bays are, are quite large. And the bar footprint is relatively small compared to that. So I don't think you're going to have, if I can just kind of litigate the past, I don't think, I don't think I have the same user really in mind. This is a nationally branded franchise with some pretty high standards. They even had their ownership come up here and meet with us at planning and zoning level. And I was happy to see that. I can't predict the future. If there are problems, we will have them addressed from a code enforcement or police perspective. But the design of the business is different than the one that you were talking about. It really is a different deal. And honestly, a little more family-friendly, like get your kids into golf. Maybe you golf and your partner doesn't, you want to teach them about golf, come here. Lessons, that type of thing. So, that is a possibility, as always. I'm not seeing it as a likely one.
Your honor, if I may?
Yes, please.
Thank you. I would echo everything that Mark has stated here. This facility, much like some of the other types of golf industry entertainment venues that we see popping up, whether it be pop stroke, top golf, et cetera, this is specific to a niche, if you will, and that's that driving range concept with ancillary service and support. But the floor plan of this one lends itself a lot more to the business they're trying to achieve. And we all are aware of the amount of square footage that that previous facility had, which lent itself to maybe some alternative use types that created more people, longer hours, staying open later, more volume of people, higher volume of people. This facility is specifically targeted and designed towards the type of amenity it's supposed to be. So I don't think that the footprint itself is actually going to lend itself to having alternative business take place within it. So I, I think that based on the, I'll switch us to my economic development side for a second. This being a nationally branded, nationally endorsed by PGA golfers, the venue itself lends itself to a targeted audience at targeted times. I think it's going to be more of that family-friendly type of venue that we would hope and expect to see.
Greg?
Thank you, your honor. So, I guess the bottom line is, is if they came in and said, I want to put a bar here, would it be allowed?
They would need a special use permit to put a bar. And now, the ExGolf venue does have bar service as part of their business operation. They also have kind of some light table fare, if you will, as well. But any, any bar in Bettendorf or any patio of alcohol service requires a special use permit. And those, those considerations about impact on the neighborhood would have to be evaluated at that time.
It's not as close to Holmes' as the other one was.
Chief?
Yeah, and I would point out, the developer in this case is also a developer of residential property, catamaran to this. Take that for what you will.
If, if I may, and just because I'm very aware of the other situations we had to deal with, that it, the proximity to the residential area was a big issue with the other one. And there's, this is a lot. So, I mean, with everything that's already been said, it's just another, I think, another point to bring up that it's not close to the residential compared to like the other issue was.
Anything else? All right, then I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on consent as Item F for consideration of our night. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll take that up as Consent F. Let's go take a look at the remaining consent items on the agenda for consideration tomorrow. I'm aware of one, we'll go, we'll start with that. Greg, Jay, you're up.
Thank you, your honor. I'm simply asking that Consent D be moved to the regular agenda. I think the council's aware that after I retired as city attorney, I ended up affiliating with the Pasternak Law Firm. And I did work with and for that firm for about 10 years. I ended my affiliation with the firm at the time I made the decision to file and run for this position. So I stopped my work with the firm in September of '23. And at that same time, that's when I withdrew from representation of my final client. The council probably remembers that client. He was the developer at Forest Grove and Devil's Glen Road. But I have not done any work at all since September of 2023. I checked with ethics experts with the Bar Association as to how I would handle any kind of conflicts that may come up with developers over the course of the time I'm sitting as a council member. Basically, the discussion centers on the fact that if I know more than any person in the public by virtue of the fact that I have represented or worked with a developer, then I should recuse myself. That if, by virtue of having the attorney-client relationship, I have a greater insight or more information, it's simply not fair to the general public and would constitute a conflict. So my intent will be, in any of those circumstances, if I am aware that I have greater information, I will move to recuse myself. I have not had any work on Consent Item D. However, I feel it's appropriate that for a certain time period, anything brought forward by the Pasternak Firm, I also recuse myself from, simply as a matter of, of good practice. So, assuming September of 2023 through September of 2024, figuring a one-year period, anything brought by the Pasternak Firm, even if I did no work on it at all, I'm going to ask that it be put on regular agenda so that I can recuse myself. That's what's going on here. The attorney of record in Consent D is the Pasternak Firm, so I want to recuse myself. Finally, your honor, just as a matter of full disclosure, because I served as Bettendorf City Attorney for a number of years, and then I served as Princeton's City Attorney for a number of years. Go Princeton! I do, from time to time, get calls from other attorneys, asking my opinion on things. So, have you ever seen such and such? Do you, what do you think about A, B, or C? I don't consider those things that trigger a conflict of interest. I think attorneys do have a tendency to talk among themselves when they come up with something that's unusual or out of the ordinary. I think of that as simply a matter of professionalism or professional courtesy within the profession. So even though I do get calls from attorneys on matters, I haven't gotten anything on a Bettendorf matter since I've taken office. I'm intending to continue to do that, to make myself available to talk about things. And generally, I won't think that that will cause a problem. If someone does ask specifically about a matter on coming in front of the city of Bettendorf, then I will simply tell them that I can't give them any advice on it. I have to be the role of council member. Your honor, with that, then I would ask that Consent D being put on regular agenda so that I could recuse myself.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, second. All those in favor? Any opposed? We'll move it. Anybody else have a question or concern, something they want to talk about on a consent agenda item?
No, sir.
Your honor?
Yeah, we'll just go right down the line. Scott, Jerry, and Frank.
I'm a little concerned about the "Go Princeton."
Is there a "Go Bettendorf" in there somewhere?
There was when I worked for Bettendorf, yes, sir.
Mayor Barath is probably pretty happy to still have a little bit of fun with the, the boys in Princeton.
Go Princeton, go fish.
Thank you, your honor.
Jerry?
Thank you, your honor. For this Item D, is there anything special or unusual we should know about this replat? That we don't already know?
Mr. Hunt, do you have any thoughts?
So that's, that replat is by Yelsey Subdivision, it's kind of the north half of that preliminary plat that was brought in. I would say the only thing, and this is a little bit more of an engineering concern, is that we just want to make sure that we have either gravity sewer or lift station to that plat in the future, and our engineering division has been working on that with the developer.
Thank you. Frank?
Thank you, your honor. I think this is for Michelle. It's been a long time since we've talked about this, but would you by any chance know how many food trucks we have registered with the city? Or is the numbers going up, or?
We have a current list on our website. I would say there's probably about maybe 20 or so? 22, yeah. So, yeah, I mean, they continue to come in periodically. So I've got a couple more that have, have contacted me about getting their license, so.
Good.
Yeah. I think there's a good, good selection.
Anything else for consent consideration? All right, let me entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the Item D hitting the general agenda.
So moved. Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any operational item anybody wishes to discuss at this time? There's a plethora of items there. I mean, one public hearing, one resolution. Anyone want to talk about that one? Okay, we'll take it up as the operational item. Anything else to be added to tomorrow night's agenda by anybody on council? I don't have anything myself. All right, let's entertain a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second.
We stand adjourned. Good work, people. Thank you all for being here.